All right, is everybody that confirm? I'm just gonna mute everybody, so if you talk, just remember to unmute yourself, that way we don't make some of the background noise. All right.
It's gonna be.
Okay, I think we got enough, right? So let's do a call to order. And do we have any citizens comments? Now, where are you, B?
Um, I think everybody here is actually on the agenda, because I see Mannan as well, she's here for, I actually have her on the agenda as well. So I don't know if they want to wait and have her talk down or speak under her citizens comments.
Okay, we can wait if she doesn't mind hanging out.
Yeah, I put her up towards the top, that way she doesn't have to sit through all the budget discussions.
Okay. Well, let's get right into informational items.
All right, um, this is just more for you guys, actually, they're not even accurate anymore, because the sports fitness guidelines were updated again today. Um, so what you see in front of you is no longer correct, uh, only changes, though, I believe, uh, had to do with pools, so. Everything that pertains to us should still be accurate on the attached version. Um, essentially, the governor said no more team sports until January 19th. Um, so no basketball, we stopped our, you know, basketball programs, uh, the adult, um, women and men's, the youth basketball can't start, no wrestling. Um, essentially, no team sport, which they consider any, you know, group four or more, um, as a team sport. Um, so basically, just attach that, as FYI, that they did put out new, new guidance. And then now DPH, their letters considered, uh, rule, just like the guidelines, when before it was just a recommendation, now it's, uh, you're required to follow it, just like the, the DECD guidelines that have been released. Two organizations to report to now.
Okay, is that it?
Yep.
And we have any comments on those?
Basically, the same thing, I just change constantly with minor things.
Okay. All right. Did everyone get a chance to look over the meeting minutes? They get a motion to approve those?
So moved.
Did we get a second?
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. You're up, Scott.
All right, let's go through this pretty quick, not a lengthy one this time, we're winding down with the, the weather getting colder. Um, the bench that, uh, for Warren Mogan is, was finally delivered, that was donated, um, to Colonel Ledger Park, we had, I think, talked about it probably over a year ago, um, but he, his son finally brought it, um, set it up, um, so it's finally located on the left-hand baseball, uh, field, up near, kind of near the, uh, what's it, Big Zebo up there. Um, as I mentioned, all these sports are on hold till January 19th, um, so no more, you know, adult basketball programs. Um, for our holiday, one of our holiday things we're gonna try, we're gonna do a gnome scavenger hunt, so we have six big, like, metal gnomes, we're gonna hide all around the parks, and, uh, ask people to find them, we're just having difficulty trying to figure out when to do it, because the rain and the weather doesn't seem to want to cooperate, maybe get a good weekend. Um, but we're looking at maybe this weekend, or, you know, through next week, um, but hoping to put those out shortly. Uh, we started receiving letters to Santa, um, we put the mailbox out, um, in the vestibule there, and we're collecting them. We should be all set with the postmaster, we deliver them to Ledger Center, and they actually, we pre-post stamp it from the North Pole, um, so it looks like it's actually being mailed there, and then they just deliver it through us, they don't run it through the machine, I have to hand deliver it to the postmaster. Um, events magazine, all the information submitted, um, actually should be out next week, um, to all residents of Ledger and Galesbury, of those that do not have a P O box. Um, I attended the inland Wetlands Commission, um, with the Tri-Town Trail, and the commissioner, the commission chair wants me to, um, contact Army Corps of Engineers to see if, uh, permits are required, uh, through them in addition to the town permits, if the Army Corps permits are required, likely also, we would have to get, uh, D permits as well. Um, the, when the lake arrators removed, we found, um, there's some issues with them, Beaver Electric sent them out to, we think it's called Keela, Electric, they work on the motors. Um, and we're waiting to hear back from them still, but the cost of the repairs, though, they're getting larger and larger each year, because they're getting fairly older. Um, so it's probably smart to look into replacing those fairly soon, because essentially, one of them, we might even have to just replace the whole motor, and at that point, it's, makes no sense to buy a new motor, you know, rather than just buy a brand-new unit for about the same price, you know, and then everything's, you know, new on it, and we're not just replacing the motor itself, with all old components. Um, that, we can talk about, and a bit of capitalism, it'd be a thing we might be able to put in, we've been looking at prices, they're anywhere from, two thousand for three of them, to like, five thousand, six thousand dollars each. Um, but then there's also different, they do different things, I gotta kind of talk to Beaver, because I think we have two fountains, are like an above-water barrator, and the other one still shoots up, but it has like a bubbler underneath it, that helps bring oxygen and a lot of that way. Um, so I'm like, gonna have to look into that, to see what setup might work best for the light, to, you know, keep the water moving, the back trigger levels down. Um, pretty much it for the director's report today, nice, for it simple, after last month, we have a lot on, on the agenda stuff.
Can I ask how you guys are gonna run the scavenger hunt?
Um, so kind of like what we did, um, when COVID first started, we'll go out and take a picture, I'll go put them out and take a picture on my phone, and then we'll post all the pictures on Facebook. Um, kind of try and make it so there's something identifiable in the background, but it's not too easy to find them. Um, and then we'll post, you know, basically a picture with all the pictures on it, you know, showing all the gnomes, and then you kind of have to go park to park to find them. Um, because we do have a good amount of them, we should really get one in a majority of the bigger, you know, larger parks, maybe we'll throw a curveball, and, you know, throw one in, uh, you know, one of the west-known parks. And they're also different sizes, too, so one's like, four feet tall, and then you might have one that's like, a foot tall, and so we'll add to the, you know, trying to find them. We'll have to talk with Russell, he, me and him will usually talk and kind of come up with, you know, some good places to put them, um, because he walks the parks every day and has some, good little nucks and crannies to stick them in, make people look for them.
Nice. And we have any comments on the director's report? Can we have a motion to, uh, accept that?
So moved.
All in favor? All right. Financial reports.
All right, so I did, uh, just attach, because we're gonna review, you know, budget numbers later, um, our year-to-date budget report, um, as you can imagine, we're, our spending is, you know, pulled down compared to what it normally would be because of COVID, we're not spending as much. Uh, I don't think it shows the percentage, I think the percentage used on the, what you guys see includes the encumbrances, which the encumbrances is just what is, uh, put into a P O, it's not money that's been spent. Um, so I think, like, we have fifty-six percent left in our contract maintenance, which makes sense, because those get paid out regardless. Um, I think we've only used fourteen percent of our maintenance, and, uh, seventeen percent of our operating expenses. And then we're doing really well on electricity as well, we've only spent twenty-one percent of it, um, and I think we're about forty, about forty percent through the year already. Um, so we're in pretty good shape, uh, because we're, we're under our spending, uh, for the year, so. But, um, that's just COVID-related, you know, lack of sports teams operating. We haven't had to buy all the supplies we normally would, and the lights aren't on, so we're not, you know, we aren't getting those huge electric bills that we typically would. Every time I turn the fields lights on, it's like, over a thousand-dollar bill easy, and we haven't got those, we have been hit with the delivery fees, but, it's not very, um, they're not very large in comparison to what our bills would typically be.
So are we all set with, um, Clark Field? The, the electrical box and stuff, like they were gonna redo that, right?
No, I have to get the lights, the electrical box has been, it's switched out, um, because it burnt out, so we did that portion already, um, so the new, the new box is in, the box can accommodate the power of the additional lights. Um, I'm waiting for Beaver, actually, I gotta contact them again, because give me a workup, and then we can put out the bid, um, for the lights, and then affix the pole. Trying to figure out how many lights we can put in with the money we have allocated for that project. Um, part of it's been done, like, the electrical box portion, like, the infrastructure, we just need to get the lights and trench, and then do that portion, um, we gotta go get that out to bid.
Okay.
We're gonna do that soon, though, because now that we're in the offseason, get that, select the person, and then have the work done, so we can get that completed before, you know, the season start. Get it done in the offseason. I'm still waiting for Grotton Utilities for the water line, he said that the, his, uh, foreman was, you know, ordering the parts, and I'm just waiting on a few months to get the exact date. Um, but they do have everything they need from us, so just kind of wait on them for the official scheduling date. We're gonna do it on a Wednesday, I believe, into a Thursday, so it's least disruptive of the school. We got a trench in front.
All right. We don't need to approve this, though, do we?
I don't think so, I think it's more just, you know, like.
Just information, right?
Yeah. It's not gonna change regardless, it's just raw data.
Okay, any other business?
Uh, I believe so. No. So anybody else has anything, kind of, any old business?
Okay, start the new business then.
All right, so we have two, um, uh, speakers tonight, Tri-Town Trail, and then, uh, the Moms Club, about a little free library. I'm not sure, do we want to have the Moms Club go first, you know, Tri-Town Trail, you guys have like a PowerPoint presentation, or is it just a, like a overview?
No, we didn't get the PowerPoint. Just be, yeah, talking.
All right, do, is it like, quick, do you want to let, um, Mannan go first, that way she doesn't have to, you know, hear all the, you know, wait through the whole meeting, she should be fairly quick. And have you guys go second?
That's fine.
All right. So, uh, Mannan, uh, you know, you have an idea for a project proposal? One sec, you're on mute.
There we go. So, yes, the Moms Club, basically, we, imperfect organization, so we're working for moms and kids, different projects, and right now, what we're doing is that we are installing a free, two, book boxes, also known as free little libraries, in different towns that are local to us, so Grotton, Mystic, Stonington, and Ledger. In Ledger, we would like to have your permission to install one, possibly two, but we'll start with one. And the localization, it's very flexible where we place them, but right now, those ideas I had was either in Crowe to the Town Hall, or Colonel Ledger Park, but we are open to recommendations also. And because we do have members in Ledger, and we think right now with the libraries that have real access, it's very good for the kids, very getting popular here.
I do think it's a good idea for Ledger, because I know, um, they do have one in the Galesbury side, it's right outside of, uh, Christie Hill Park, someone has it in their yard, so that way you'd be on the other side of town.
It, they are quite popular, we just installed the two, like, that we're in the process of installing, and they're becoming more and more popular, and it's good access for kids.
Do you want it in front of the town hall, or you want it in the, um, the park area that's the, the green?
Uh, for as long as it is easily accessible for kids and their parents, so we're very flexible once again, but, yeah, it's just access that really matters to us, so.
Yeah, because we would be able to approve the park, but Town Hall would be, that'd be a different group you'd have to go get permission from.
The original idea we had was Colonel Ledger Park, we use that playground a lot for soccer, basically, and that's why, that's one place I think could be potentially good.
And what would be required for the, uh, actual storage area, the library?
Uh, okay, well, the size of the library, it's about just, it's about only two feet wide, the library, about four feet, four, five feet high, we, we are just at base on what people in charge from New Parks and Recs would agree with, so we build it, we are totally in charge, yeah, like that picture, that's one of them, with the little post under. And, uh, that's it, we just put it there in concrete, we put a block of concrete underground to make sure that it's solid, it doesn't get pushed by the wind, and we take care of them, the Moms Club. Yeah, those are various examples. We're gonna get, we got basically some money coming in to build those, and everything is flexible, so if you say two feet is too wide, you want a bit smaller, it's all things we can work with you.
So, do you think, um, Colonel Ledger might be a little too hidden to have something like that, like, seems like the town green might be more appropriate, that's actually, there's enough people there, there's a police station across the street and that type of thing.
That would be great, I think, yes.
Um, you know that they're doing, are any of the improvements that they're doing to the town green going to interfere with, or is it like, uh, you know, the, the grant work that they're doing? Um, yeah.
We probably want to consider a location, because I know they're, as part of that work, they're doing a lot of landscaping, um, you know, around the outskirts, we want to probably choose a location that they're not gonna be, you know, putting bushes, uh, tricky stuff in. Um, but then again, that is really close to the library, so I don't know if that's the best location for it, well, they're both kind of close to the library.
Okay, if we, if we decide to go to Colonel Ledger Park, I think we just have to be cautious about where to put it, because we know that there's non-parking lot parking that happens there quite frequently, and we'd want it to be visible and not damaged.
Yeah, definitely, we could put it behind a rock barrier, and sure, it doesn't get hit.
That would be a great place when soccer and stuff starts up, because there's siblings that, uh, could kind of, be a nice thing to say, hey, let's go check out the library.
We also have summer camps down there, too, so you'd have, in the summer, you have tons of kids down at that location as well.
It's asked the Moms Club that, to make sure that there's no damage being done, and also, we are getting a lot of, of, uh, books, basically, donated, old books from Mystic Libraries and Grotton Libraries, different libraries, so that we can always refill them up for, for the kids.
And Mannan, what's the age group that you work with? Like, what are the books for the ages?
Right now, we work, right now, our group, we have horns all the seven-year-olds, the oldest, but we target also the parents, so that means any books. We focus mainly on kids, but anyone can bring any kind of books to swap, or to just leave there, or take some, even if they don't have any to give, it's completely open, we just want to encourage literacy and, you know, bring something.
Sounds great. I mean, as far as the concepts are concerned, I think that is a no-brainer, I don't think we have any issue with you putting it somewhere, on the field somewhere. Um, I guess it's to sort out, what's the best location, when it comes down to it. So do we want to give a motion, accept a little free library somewhere?
I'll motion.
Okay, we got a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Awesome, looking forward to seeing it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Welcome. All right, now I can, I'll turn it over to you, Karen, unless someone else is, uh, presenting tonight from the Tri-Town Trail, I know you guys want to provide an update.
Okay, I, I can see. This is Karen Partis, and I present the Tri-Town Trail. Um, want to thank the membership for, um, where we got, too much noise. Want to thank the community for, um, taking us under their jurisdiction, so help us do it. I just got mentioned in the, in the, and that, um, all that discussion, that, so January meeting, after we get a report from, uh, Ian Cole, who's a soil scientist, who made a, of the initial report for the initial, um, permitting. He has been out on the trail, and he is, in, in essence, preparing his report as we speak, uh, well, we'll share that with you as soon as we receive a copy. We're actively looking on fundraising, and I'll probably work with Scott, and when we make a, there's one fund, uh, application for, um, the, um, Foundation of Southeastern, uh, Eastern Connecticut, that will probably, uh, work with Scott to put that under Parks and Rec, that should be like a fifteen-thousand-dollar application. Uh, probably for a, a parking lot, unless we come, come up with something, um, a better application for that, but that has to be in by January fifteenth. Um, I'm looking at sustain, sustainability for, um, Connecticut, for towns in Connecticut, that might be another option for a larger grant, I know that, uh, grant money is very, uh, sparse right now due to COVID, so we probably won't get too far with that. Um, the mayor, um, a month or so ago, gave us permission to blaze a trail up on Clark Farm, south, up on the upper end of it, where we discovered some Spicer ruins. Um, we're trying to connect with, I've connected with Historical Society to help me, uh, explore how we can document that better, and so that's in process. Um, the probably next step will be move with the mayor to get a referral to land use, and then probably to the town council to develop that trail up there, that's not part of the original northern section, that'll be a new adventure, doing that, so we'll have to move forward to that, we've got it pretty well blazed now. Um, two little things we may need some help with is the entrance to the woods, I spoke to Scott about that, so we want to do something to discourage any, uh, motorized vehicles from going into woods where there is, we do use that for access down for construction and getting materials down there, but we need to put something up there to discourage any other vehicle traffic. Um, and then there is one tree up on the trail, uh, that needs a removal more than our volunteers are capable of doing, I did mention to the mayor a, a month ago, uh, with all the storms recently, it's getting a little more, um, active. It's kind of, it's, it's a dead tree that's got hung up into other trees, and so it can't fall down, you can't cut it down. Um, we'll probably have, the mayor said he was gonna talk to Public Works about getting out there to do it, that, but we, Scott and I, we may need a follow-up on that, okay? Um, Tom is going to speak about, uh, our walk with, uh, um, Fluvial Geo-morphologist, and B is gonna give a little, uh, update on a couple other walks, so I'll turn it over to either B or Tom, whoever wants to go next.
This is Tom Olson, uh, I'm down in, uh, Grotton, uh, just for full disclosure, I'm a member of the Grotton Conservation Commission, and also a director with the, uh, Tri-Town Trails here. Uh, this past weekend, we had Doug Thompson, who's a professor at, uh, Con College, and specializes in hydrology, uh, walked the entire trail, and focusing in on, are we overkilling with all these, uh, bridges and stuff that we had originally, uh, put into the master plan, as far as, and so he basically did an onsite evaluation. Feature of the rivulets, we have our initial bridge in place going over, going off, on, on the, uh, the north end of the, uh, of the, uh, of, uh, of the trail, but then going along the trail, we've identified about eight locations where there's, uh, a rivulet, where there's been flow of water in the past, there's a number of boulders, it's kind of like a washed-out gully, and most of them have some spring water that's still, uh, coming out, even, uh, but what he went through on, on Sunday, which is after all raining all day Saturday in the storm and everything, he found a number of trees, additional trees down, um, but he said basically that you're, you're not seeing any washout, uh, relative to, um, that would cause us to have any, uh, running water that you would need to span a bridge on, and so for those rivulets, what his recommendation is that we just put in additional, uh, rocks and boulders and, uh, and just some type of bog bridge, which is just be a surface contact of, of wood, uh, and just go over that, but in, in conjunction with getting a, um, soil, the soil, uh, engineer to verify that these not, are not wetland soils, and, uh, use that, and he'd be willing to, if we need to have any kind of additional documentation, he will do a study for us and, and document the, the highest, uh, volume, but he's very confident that there's no issues relative to hydrology. Uh, we do need to do, though, is there are, at the south end of the, uh, of the current trail, just before you go into the fields, uh, at the Joe Clark Farm, uh, there's a, there's a, a branch, uh, creek that comes in from the west side, on, needs to be, there needs to be a span over that, uh, it's on the trail today. There were, it was really running water on, on Sunday, it's kind of surprising, I've never seen it this much, but we're gonna have to put some kind of bridging in there, we'll need to go out and get permitting for that. Uh, likewise, crossing Joe Clark, uh, um, Creek, uh, Brook, excuse me, coming from the Red Barn across over to the, 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 uh, power line easement there, uh, we did locate a old bridge, uh, location, uh, and it's only about six feet across, so we can, and we'd be very easily to support, uh, a six-foot-wide bridge, which is support the, uh, Ledger EMS people, because they want to be able to take their, uh, uh, ATV and get across there, and to do any type of rescue or, or, uh, support efforts, uh, so that they can get, uh, equipment out there, so that's the location that, uh, that was recommended by the hydrologist and confirmed with the, uh, with the Ledger, uh, firefighters. And so we'll be, going in, that'll be another permitting, uh, request that we're gonna have to coordinate. And then, uh, continuing south along Joe Clark, uh, Brook, there's a, a historic crossing, uh, that the farm tractors have been using for, for decades here, uh, and that needs to be upgraded, there was about a hundred feet of standing water to get across there on Sunday with the, with the rain and everything, uh, but we, that would just be, they can't get across, but just continue to improve the area, uh, that was already in use, uh, and that needs to be upgraded. And then, in the, as Karen mentioned, on the south end of the, uh, property, there's another crossing, it's a Joe Clark, um, um, creek that needs to be done, um, near the Spicer Rock, uh, and the Spicer Foundation, uh, he made, gave us a best recommendation for a location for that, we were kind of close with that one, and, uh, and so that will be in a, a, a fourth, uh, location that needs to be upgraded, so a lot of work, uh, coming down the pipe here as far as for additional permitting, that we'll have to coordinate with you guys, uh, in the future, I just want to give you a heads-up that there's, in 2021, we'll probably be getting, as we go through getting the engineering, getting the soil evaluations, hydrology, uh, putting all that together into a wetlands, uh, application for these, uh, four crossings that we'll be needing. So I guess that's all I had for tonight, unless you have any subject to your questions.
Thanks, Tom, appreciate it, uh, great update. Yeah, I took, I did a little walk with B a few weeks back, and, uh, yeah, all those things you talked about, I definitely, uh, had noticed that there was gonna be a problem that you might have fixed. Does anyone have any comments?
B is trying to speak, but I don't know.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
You can hear me now, but it says mute on me, but I don't know what that, all right, yes, we got Ken out there, we even got him working, he did a little brush clearing for us, too. But we gave him a tour, uh, and we walked the northern section of the Tri-Town Trails, and just to reiterate, i- if any of you are interested, it's an open invitation for you to come down and walk the trail, we're there, usually a Saturday or Sunday working, so just give us a heads-up, and we'd be happy to have. just give us a heads up and we'd be happy to have you join us. Um, it has been a busy four weeks since the last time I talked to you. So last Friday, we had Jason Mancini, who is an archaeologist come out. And you might know his name. He was the director of the Mashin Tucket Peak Park Museum for many years. So we brought him out to identify ruins and to clarify whether we had found the Spicer homestead. And indeed, he felt as though the Spicer homestead is there. It happens to have two depressions of cellars, which he said was unusual. But the central location of the fireplace and the collapsed rocks, he feels is definitely the central location, the central fireplace. And not only that, I guess it's about the 20 or 30 yards away is also a well. So that was another determinant. So with him, we were able to determine that, uh, that is probably the old homestead. So that was great. And also he happens to have a biology background and there are a lot of 100 year old trees out there. So he had a great time identifying trees for us and all, and it's a beautiful spot. We can't wait to be able to open that up and show you all. Um, and then today I was out with Groton Open Spaces. And we brought them in to help us identify invasives, native plants, trees, and also the people who came from Groton Open Spaces were their person who coordinates the stewardship and work crews and also their biologists. Um, and what we were able to identify some invasives in the meadow. And of course, pretty much everywhere along the trail. But we were also able to identify some, um, really unusual trees. There were some black cherries out there. There were a lot of shag bark hickories on one side and a lot of ironwood on the other side, which are trees you don't always find in, um, in your general forest area. So that was pretty exciting. And we're working with them on identifying what tools we need and how to set up our work crews. So they've been a great friend. I tell you, anytime we ask any help with Groton Open Spaces or if they identify any workshops that they're doing, they have one on chainsaw that, um, training for using a chainsaw. So if any of you ever have a feeling like you'd like to be trained on how to use a chainsaw, it's coming up this spring. So, and they're inviting us to join on that as well. So, um, that's basically the report, but there's a lot been happening and we're excited to see the trail move forward and hope you're excited with us. Thank you.
Good question. What do you guys do when you find the, um, invasives? Do you just leave them there or is there some kind of, um, mitigation?
Well, when we talked to Groton Open Spaces, we identified that one bittersweet, we want to take that down because that really hampers and kills healthy trees. So all the way along the trail, we will identify those as ones that we will take down. As far as the other invasives, multi-floral rose, uh, there was a Japanese honeysuckle out there. Um, there is barberry, Japanese barberry out there. We'll probably, you know this all right very well. We will probably clear when we go from the meadow into the woods, that first area. Um, and then we'll see where we're going. The barberry was especially of interest because they say they found like 20 more ticks per batch of invasive in barberry than they would in any other invasive. So that one I think is one we really will probably attach and attack. And that's from the bridge going up the hill. There's quite a bit of that as well. The rest of the trail will keep as a hiking trail and probably only if it impacts trail or hikers will we cut it back. But designated areas, we will, you know, attack the invasives and, um, and at this point we're just doing cutting back and trying to move it and place it off the trail. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else have any comments or questions for tri-town trail people? All right. Well, thanks, B. Thanks, uh, Tom and Karen. Appreciate all your efforts. It's, it's amazing the work you've guys done already and how much more is left.
Yeah.
So we're, we're definitely, we're definitely behind you guys and we'll do the best we can to support you as far as we can. So we're looking forward to seeing it continue.
The wider community is coming out, Ken. Yeah. The wider communities. I'm seeing a lot of tri-town trail on Facebook and things like that. So it's, it's definitely spreading. Congrats, guys.
Awesome. All right. Well, thank you, guys.
Okay. Thank you.
What's the next thing here? We discussed the soil comments there, Scott?
Yep. Different soil samples here. These are for the field. So, uh, Mike took, uh, the soil samples and was able to send those over to me. Um, lining of the field is one thing that's not included in the turf management contract. Um, so we did review, um, a lot of the numbers and we're, you know, not surprised to see that, uh, depth of field is perfect. We're spot on, but we put a lot of effort into that field and actually even I believe did a nutrient booster earlier in the season with some of the leftover money from the previous contract. Um, so we don't have to touch anything with that. Uh, I believe also is that Clark's, Clark's is also spot on. I think, um, one of the fields that plunders is just a tad off. Um, but Mike gave me numbers, um, and I think for all the, the materials and the labor would be about $3,800 to do all our fields. It seems like a lot, but it's, it's not really because you're talking a lot of surface area to, to spread all the, the lime necessary. Um, which we typically have about, I think, luckily extra times a budget night. I think it's $3,000 for, um, what we put for turf or like, you know, extra stuff. Stuff that's not included in our turf management, management contract. So really we're only about $800 short, which actually with all the COVID cancellations, I should be able to cover no problem because the money for the light parade and the Easter egg hunt are, you know, exceeds what we need to, um, cover the extra money that we didn't budget for. Um, so, I mean, unless you guys have any issues, like you could probably have him go for it and he would do that. I think this month it gives the lime a chance to get into the soil and actually, um, make the amendments before the spring. He also wants to use this fast acting product that I think it's more expensive per bag, but you put less of it down. So it ends up being, um, I think cheaper, the same price, price as if you just use the regular, lime that takes a long time to get into effect. Cause instead of four bags for thousands where we use it's like one of the other stuff that's more expensive. So when you compare the bag price, um, it's about the same and then we get quicker results.
I'd go for, Scott, the one question I had though, that was when I looked at the results, Clark versus Purdy, I mean, two seemingly same plots of land and there's a pretty distinct difference in some of the soil conditions.
Um, and I think that has some, a little bit to do, uh, multiple factors to do with like what was, was done in the past. Cause I believe Purdy's up top, um, that's got a little more attention from the previous turf manager than the lower field. Also the lower field, um, I don't know if it has to do with the saturation, but the lower field is typically very saturated. The upper field, um, it's a very different situation, especially in the spring, um, which probably affects the levels. Um, and I know it definitely affects when we can get work done in that field too. We're kind of at the mercy of the weather. Cause whenever it's, that field kind of almost floods. But I know he wants to address, um, his next goal is to bring, um, Crandall Field up to par. There's a lot of weeds there. So he really wants to make sure that gets the lime so we can hit, hit the proper, um, herbicides down. Cause if we can eliminate the weeds, the grass can slowly, uh, you know, fill in there. Um, we saw good results, but you know, the weeds are preventing that grass from fully taking over. I mean, that is a location that we do have, um, the irrigation system. So there should be no reason why that field shouldn't look exactly like, uh, Purdy field does currently.
I see on depth of phosphorus is like off the charts. Is that, did he make a comment about that at all?
Um,
It's like three times what the optimal level is.
I don't know if that's a good thing. He seemed like, he basically told me depth was perfect, like fantastic, had all the best, you know, the best numbers of all our field. But I don't know if that's maybe something to do with the nutrient boost that he put down in the spring on that location. I don't know if that's, you know, heavy on the phosphorus. But I'm hoping that, yeah, now that I see that, that, you know, that optimal, you know, that if it's greater than that, that's a good thing. Um, cause he didn't mention that, um, he was very happy with how depth turned out. So I, I will follow up with him though on that and just make sure he didn't miss anything.
Okay. And so I guess, I mean, we have the extra money. We may also use it because it's going to be beneficial to all the parks and the fields. So I have no issue with using the money already have, that's not being spent.
Yeah. Because I think it's just an extra 800 on top of what we do have in typically the general maintenance line that we allocate for that.
And everything's being rested, so there's no better time to do it. Go for it.
Yeah. Cause we're seeing, we've put a lot of effort in. So, you know, we don't want to really hold back a lot of those results to continue. So.
Okay. We don't need to prove that too. We just pretty much.
I don't think, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, all the money's all allocated. It would just be moving things around in my mind.
Yeah.
Where it's coming from in that line. So, but more just information for you, cause he, you know, presented this and he's also, I think, wants to do, uh, like a workup that I'll be able to give to you guys, I think, next month of what we accomplished and had talked about and like his goals and the plan for the next season. As far as, you know, where he's going to focus, you know, certain fields a little more, um, certain things he wants to do to, you know, get those fields where they, he wants them to be. Um, so hopefully we'll have that for next time. He'll do a little report for us.
Okay. Great.
Hi. I'm refreshing change, Scott. So this is great.
Yeah. Very scientific. He definitely knows this stuff. So sometimes he even loses me.
Definitely got switched.
Oh yeah. Definitely unsatisfied. Um, it was a good, good decision to go themselves.
Okay. So you got a proposed budget?
Yep. Uh, this was an easy year for me, to be honest, uh, for the bud, the budget, not really capital. I have a lot, lot that you could pick from, from that, but sadly it's exactly the same as last year. I didn't see any changes that needed to be made because everything's exactly the same. We haven't inherited any electrical, electric bills this year, water bills like we did last year. Um, everything's pretty much remained the same price and of our, uh, like software, uh, not that increased. So, um, looks, right now I think we can put in for the exact same amount. Um, I don't want to cut anything from electricity just yet, um, cause we didn't really get a good year to gauge where we're at with some of the new, uh, services that we took over. I have a feeling in the future, we might be able to shave off a little bit there when they're looking for cuts due to, I think, when we calculated that number with the fairground bill that we inherited, the fair has like one month, but their bill went from, you know, a typical bill to like, I don't know, like $10,000 or something like that for the fair when they run all the rides. Um, so I think we kind of guestimated on that, but it could be a little bit higher than, you know, our actual need due to that. Um, but we were able to really get concrete numbers this year of use because they're, you know, nobody's using the fields, the electric bill, they're all down.
Yeah. Scott, my only concern with keeping it flat, and I'm just talking out loud here. So if you think I'm crazy, shoot it down, but we know the electric delivery charges are just going through the roof. Is this a count? Do you think we're going to be okay being flat? Because we know that's just increasing.
Yeah. So our electric, so there's been a change with the electric. What we did is the electric at the town green before was, um, included like everybody in the area on the service. Like you had the church, the food pantry, all the, the property. We actually separated that and no longer are paying all of those bills. Actually I hand them that one service over to the church now. And we have a brand new meter, which is just the electric on the property. Um, so that should also cut some money, um, down there.
Okay.
Um, so it should make up for the increase in the, um, delivery charges as well. The only other concern would be with, when we do get the lights in at Clark's Purdy, there will be additional, I believe, three lights. There will be LED though, so they will take a lot less, they'll draw a lot less power. Um, and if we have enough, our plan is to even maybe replace, um, some of the existing lights to LED. If, you know, the money's there to allow for it, which actually reduce our, uh, electrical costs even further at, at another location.
Are, are those field lights that are going in?
Yeah. So at the soccer field, um, we have Clark's and Purdy. I believe Clark's has lights completely around. Uh, Purdy has one side of lights and then it's missing the side closest to the school. So our, one of our capitals, there's also a leaning pole that will the plans to upright that and then put in additional lighting on the other side. Um, cause I've heard it gets very dark on the, you know, the side of the field that doesn't have the lights when they're playing a soccer game. Um, but those would be LED, the new lights that go in. Um, and then the box is already set up. We got the breakers and everything installed to accommodate. And actually the new breaker should prevent us from all those electrical costs we've been having over the past couple of years with the breakers, you know, burning up every, you know, once every other year or every year. And we got a special huge BP breakers that can accommodate to draw those, the halogen lights that are there. Cause it, it really stresses the system versus the LED lights.
So this might be a question to like the next topic of the capital improvements, but if those LEDs work out well, is the electricity, is that, is there a plan to switch over to LEDs?
That's one of the things on my list, um, uh, for the, yeah, the next, the little next, uh, lineup for the capital improvement. It's one of the things we essentially should rank. You know, pick the most important kind of list on.
Yeah. Cause that, I look at that electric bill and I'm like, holy cow. It's a lot of, leaves a lot of electricity.
Yeah. It's, I know when the leagues turn the lights on, but it's literally it'll go for like $43 a month and jump, jump up.
You can use the meter and the fan. Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, certainly in the past, that's about the costs of electricity per year. I remember when Don was here, but obviously electricity is probably more expensive now than it was five years ago.
Yeah.
So as Shay was mentioning, that may not be enough if it's used the same amount of times as it used to be.
Well, we, last year we put in, I think it was like a, a $9,000 increase. So that's why I'm not overly worried about increasing again this year. Um, cause we did see a substantial increase in the electrical line. Um, more than what we took in with the, you know, one or two services. And then the other service has actually been shrunk down. So that should benefit, benefit us even more. Um, next year we might have to, you know, look and see as the rates continue to climb, but I think for the upcoming year, we should be all right. Um, and then hopefully we'll have triple E and all that. So we actually get a good gauge of what we're spending. It's been tough for the past years since I started. We haven't had a real good spring or fall where they lose the lights. It's kind of, um, rain, they had me use the fields and then got triply in the fall. They were off by, you know, dusk and dawn.
All right. Let's, I mean, let's, I mean, you're not going any higher than it used to be. So it's like.
Yeah. That's why I forgot.
Kind of tough to say no.
Yeah. And last year we kind of, some of the things that we cut, we didn't really cut, we, you know, reallocated it for like staff trainings, which we're planning to do like, you know, for me and mine could be certified for parking wreck professionals and stuff like that. So, I mean, if we do have to get cut, that could be somewhere we could go would be, you know, some of those staff trains. I mean, if we do have to get cut, that could be somewhere we could go, would be, you know, some of those staff train certifications, maybe, but. Only, you know, it gets to that point and they request it, would be, that's the to cut, but I mean, we didn't go up, so hopefully we should be in good shape.
Yeah, I think, you know, if anything, we've, our responsibility has grown. We have more expenses that we could be spending, but we're actually kept the budget lower and it's actually been cut. I mean, two years ago, we cut a twelve percent.
Hmm.
So, the fact that it's still staying as small as it was five years ago with an expanded amount of responsibilities is, is impressive.
Yeah, because I mean, last year, like, I think the only increase we had was the electric line, which they had no problem with because of the additional services we took over, so. We've had to improvise, you know, we've adapted too with the way we use the special revenue account, um, which helps keep, you know, our budget where we need to be for the town. Oh, can, or I need, I think.
Do we need to approve that now then?
Um, I mean, we can't, I don't.
It's going to come up again.
Have to, um, we have, of course, a staff meeting tomorrow, which I'm assuming is to talk about budget season. Um, but I did see, um, like the council agenda, I think that it's like March.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
The dates in March, but I'm assuming we'll start, you know, the meetings with the mayor, because there's a whole process. Um, it's up to you guys, we can approve it, or if we want to wait another month, it'll, I can work into it a little more and crunching numbers. Make sure we didn't, and didn't miss anything.
Actually, give yourself a month, Scott, right? If it's not lost, let's, let's just revisit it in January and.
Yeah.
Put it in there.
Looking at that, that's a good idea, because the one thing I'm concerned about is the porta potties. Global Site Services was just bought out by United Site Services, so it's a new company providing the porta potties. Um, so I want to make sure we're not going to see a, a rate increase.
Okay.
Provider.
All right.
All right, that's what we'd deal with for this. Now, capital projects. So, I received an email, I want to say last week, and of course, they didn't give us very much time for this. Uh, they have to be into the system, uh, they're using a new, like, clear gov system to track the capital projects, which will be nice, because last year they, like, one of our projects kept getting left off, and I had to keep bringing it up, um, because it wasn't on the first spreadsheet that got sent down. It was the, the updated version, and then the previous version was the one that got sent out to everybody, and they were going off of. Um, so we have to put in projects into the system. Um, I don't have all, how much we have for the cap, I'm trying to get in touch with the finance director, um, know how much we can, you know, use and how much we have left. But I figured tonight what we could do is at least kind of rank projects, and then when I get the amount, I can put them into the system and get, you know, all the estimates, and then bring those to the next meeting, um, you know, for the actual approval. Um, once they're in the system, I can actually print, I think, you know, the description with all the numbers out. I'm hoping it'll make, um, my life easier as well, not just the town planner. Um, so, and some of the ideas, I kind of talked with Russell today too, and anything you guys could think of. Um, one of the top things definitely we have is new, uh, aerators for Highlands Lake. And then also, we're thinking if we're doing improvements there, we could possibly get, um, like bacterial additives, uh, dye powder to kind of clean up the pond itself. Um, and then we're also want to look into regrading the beach. Um, I also want to talk to Public Works, so this might be something they can do. Um, we, we bring sand in every year, uh, literally, it, it washes right out in the same spot. That's just not graded right, and it baffles Russell, because apparently the water moves uphill there before it goes back downhill. Um, he doesn't understand how it does it, he says it defies the laws of physics, but it, it's a steady flow and it erodes out the center of the beach, and we have to bring in the loader to sand every spring. Um, just to fill the rut, so then it doesn't really, you know, fluff up the beach like we really want it to. Um, another idea we had is, uh, so with the issues at Christie Hill, one of the projects, I was thinking is, uh, improvements to Christie Hill, like solar lights, parking lot upgrades, which actually we might be able to save costs with doing millings through Public Works. And then things that we could even add, like a park sign, there's no sign there stating that it's even a park. Um, and then Russell recommended to maybe even install on a grill there, and there's a bunch of picnic tables that are actually cemented into the ground on a pole. Um, but there's no, you know, grills or anything, you know, really the reason to utilize those picnic tables at that location. And then also remove some of the trees that are there to open up the view. Uh, Public Works can take care of all the brush, but it's the, the larger trees, we'd probably need a tree service to come in and take down. Um, let's see, another thing we had was, uh, new pavilion canopies for Erickson. Um, because it's getting, we wouldn't need the frame, it would just be a new canopy to go over it, as, you know, over the years, they start to tether and, you know, get torn up. Uh, they're still in decent shape, but it's getting towards, you know, the end of its life, um, so something to start thinking of, definitely get another season out of them, but. Um, he's not sure if it, we might get, you know, more than that. Uh, it just depends on the weather, um, you know, if we have a bad season as far as winds, I mean, it is right on the water, so it does take a beating. And then also, we're thinking if we do anything at location, um, there's been a lot of requests to refresh the stone dust walking path at Erickson. And then also, Russell's had a good idea, is to kind of clear the trees along the water, so you actually have a water view there. Um, it might be a good location for wed, like weddings and things like that, but right now, the trees kind of block, block the view of the river, and that's also a popular spot to watch, uh, the regatta. Um, let's see. Another project was, uh, so the town green playground we inherited from the school. Uh, we're not a fan of the safety surfacing, it's sand. It's a huge mess, and it's not exactly the best, the safest surfacing as far as playground surfacing goes. Um, so we're thinking about removing that and then replacing it with, uh, engineered wood fiber and then installing new borders. And that's also something we're thinking about, we need to get woodchips, you know, in general for all, for all of our playscapes, just to ensure that we meet the ASDM standards. We did get some woodchips, not this year, but the previous year, with some money we had in the budget. Um, but it really wasn't, you know, the volume we probably need to meet the depth requirement. And then over the years, they compact and it's not considered in the, um, the depth you need for the fall surfacing. Um, so you have to measure on top of the old woodchips that are compacted. Um, because it won't, um, take the, the force of the fall properly if it's, uh, compacted, the older woodchips, you have to bring in new material every so often. Um, either that, or we could also look at doing the, they have the, the permanent surfacing, the pour in place, uh, like rubber surfacing, then we don't have to replace surfacing over, over time. It's also alleviates some maintenance needs as well, Russell doesn't have to go rake the swing sets and, you know, every other day. Um, you know, it would just be a permanent surface that would last a fairly long time. You know, we could just patch if there's any issues versus having to bring in loads of woodchips and spreading. Um, another thing is, uh, the Public Works, uh, mechanics have made me aware that the parking wreck truck is essentially beyond what they say is the useful life. It's still in decent shape, but he said we should start thinking about getting a new truck um, in the very near future, because I think, forgot how old the truck is, but it's, it's up there. I don't know, I say twenty years old, or, um, don't quote me on it, but it's, he's, it's on the older, older side, and then with the mileage. And we should start thinking about getting a new one. And we also want a lift gate with the truck as well. Um, another project that I'm not sure is something we need to do this year, I gotta look at the dates and see when the, the roofs of the pavilions were all um, installed or done last, because I think you should get twenty-five years on the roof. Uh, but that's something we need to start thinking about. Um, and then this one is resurface or crack fill the Gales Ferry Community Center tennis and basketball courts. I don't know if this is a project that we want to do, um, because it is a leased property. Um, it's leased for a very long time, but it is not town owned on land, we only own the Donahue portion after the tennis court, um, fence line.
Is it a safety issue or just an aesthetic issue?
It's, the, so we had Public Works fill the cracks on the tennis court. Um, I think at the beginning of the spring, and I think they even did it again recently, and it's, they're like sinking, they're fairly deep. Um, so there's been some fairly large cracks that could be a tripping hazard. Um, we could try and fill them again, you know, Public Works does the, just a regular road fill though, it's nothing specific to a tennis court. Um, Joe's nice enough to go in and do that, his guys fill those cracks, um, with what they have. Um, because that's a, I think like an asphalt court, it's not like what we have at Blonders with the, you know, all the fancy mesh membrane and all that. Um, so I mean, we can try that again and see if it takes, I mean, we kind of filled it just to keep water out and from it expanding, and to prevent the safety issue of anybody tripping on it, because we're getting large, and we had weeds growing out of it.
This is at the Gales Ferry School?
Um, the lease is, I, it's a long, like ninety-nine years or something like that.
I meant, I meant the terms of are we responsible for maintaining the property in the lease, or is it a traditional owner maintained?
So, we might, that, we might need to get permission from the Gales Ferry Fire District to do, unlike there, in the lease, there's certain things like general uh, upkeep or repairs that you're allowed to do. Um, and then actually that we're responsible for doing, and then if there's anything larger, we would have to get permission from the district.
Okay.
Um, but I don't know if that's something that, you know, the town would go for either, um, but I put it on there just, you know, because it is something that's kind of an issue. Um, I have convert field lights to LED, um, we have Crandall, Clark's, Purdy, and Defta. Um, guessing we wouldn't build you all at the same time, but that's, you know, something to think of. Uh, that would also save on our electric bills drastically, as well as our, you know, maintenance, electrical maintenance costs as well, because those halogen lights put a lot of stress on the, the breaker and the whole system, and there's, you know, a lot of issues that we have due to that. Um, with the draw, the less draw from the LED lights, you, you have a lot less issues in addition to the reduced electrical bills as well. Um, then I also have closed circuit security camera systems for parks. Um, we want to turn the Blonders Badminton Court into a volleyball court, and then actually, we could even start a volleyball program down there. I'm not sure if that would be large enough for a capital project, we gotta look into that, that might be something under the threshold. Um, we're all.
That's the one right behind the pavilion, right?
Yeah, um, so it's a badminton court right now, it's not really, it's just kind of a net, but there's a lot of people that use it for volleyball. Um, because the Filipino group that meets down there and does their big picnic, they actually meet there like one or, one to three nights a week and play volleyball, Russell says. Um, so they're usel- using the badminton court for volleyball. Um, so, you know, it might be better to actually turn it into a volleyball court, and then actually, we could utilize this parking wreck too, because I know like Mottville has a very successful, uh, volleyball program outdoor and indoors, it's, uh, very popular, and actually, they just run it for free, they essentially pick the night, promote it, and you just kind of show up, they don't even have really anybody need to run it. Um, it's just a sign night that you show up to play, uh, pickup. Essentially, the director comes down on the first night and makes sure everybody's registered and. Um, but, we'll have to check in. Huh?
Is the, is the, is it lighted?
Um, I don't believe so. Um, there is the pavilion right there, we could easily put up a spotlight right on, you know, facing if we wanted to. Um, then you got electrical costs though as well, added to that, but. Um, let's see. And then another, a good one that we were, actually I was talking about with Russell is at Sawmill Park, possibly adding a pavilion or a gazebo. Uh, Sawmill Park's, you know, a popular place for people to have weddings, I mean, you know, having like a gazebo or pavilion might increase the draw to rent that, that property. Um, essentially, right now, it's just people that want to have wedding pictures or have the small wedding ceremony, we'll rent the park, but there's no real cover. Um, I think there's just a grill and it's just open space, uh, with a porta potty. So it might be worth, you know, adding that as, you know, a rental location, you know, with a physical, uh, either a pavilion as gazebo. Um, Paul's been wanting us to do something to clear an area at Blonders and then install like those big cement, uh, like squares to make, uh, storage area for material like loom, uh, woodchips, things like that, so we have it on hand. And, you know, we could actually buy large quality, you know, quantities and store it, and get it for, you know, more affordable price, have it on hand versus like if we need a load of loom, going and getting, you know, a small load, you know, at a higher rate.
What about where?
At Blonders somewhere, um, I think over by his little garage. I forgot if it was to the right or to the left, to pick an area with, he wants to also try and make it so you can't get access to it. He won't. Um, that's just an idea, apparently he's been bringing it up, not just to me, but to Don for many years as well.
Wouldn't like the duck be better spot for that?
Um, that's where we did store our woodchips, uh, last time. Um, so I mean, we could certainly do it, it's just, they need it out at certain times when they move things around and start doing their mulching, and depends on this, the time of year. Um, but actually, I can talk to Joe, he might even have like those cement blocks on hand to help, you know, or if you can get ahold of any, just to make our makeshift little storage bay for some materials for him, without having to go get anything fancy back there.
I would definitely worry about it walking at, at Colonel Letchard, but.
Yeah. That was me and Russell, one of our concerns too, we'd have to kind of hide it somehow and chain it up, and then there's still,
Yeah.
you know, people will still get to it if they want it. Um, also, Russell brought up, I don't think this is something in immediate need, but we need to think about the mobile restrooms being quite old, um, so it might need to be replaced in the future. I think he said it's over, it's going on twenty years now. Um, everything still works, not only, we had a little leak, but we were able to fix that this year. Uh, it was nothing new.
How often is that used, Scott? Right, I mean, the cost of a mobile restroom replacement versus porta potty?
Yeah, um, I mean, it gets used whenever somebody rents, it's only when someone rents Sawmill, it's the only time we open it up. Um, because there's, you know, we have to fill it with water, then we have to get it pumped. Um, plus, if you leave it running at all times, it runs the water through the system. Um, so we only, that's why we only turn it on when someone rents it, and actually Russell goes and shows them, like, when you're ready to use it, just plug, you know, the cord in, he leaves the extension cord out and shows them, just plug it in and then turn it on, and when you leave, make sure to unplug it, because otherwise it continuously runs the water through the system, so you have to, uh, pump it and refill it more often if we're to leave it running at all times. That's why we just limit it to, uh, rental use, and then have the porta potties for the general public.
Yeah, just, uh, do we, I mean, do we make enough cost on the Highlands rental to offset the cost of replacing it, would be my question.
Yeah, and a lot of that goes to town anyways, back into the general fund, so. It's not coming to Parks and Rec. But it's, right now, not a, not really a huge concern, it was just something Russell brought up. Um, and then, if any other, we need any other projects, there's the whole list of Town Green Phase Two projects we could choose from, if need be, but.
Is there anything you need to do with the trail behind the community center?
Um, I mean, it's, it's a workable trail, we've, I've walked it, it's not in bad shape, I think a Boy Scout just as their, one of their Eagle Scout projects, kind of touched up the trail, and I think you can put like benches back there. Um, it's fairly wide, it's a pretty easy walk, that's why actually we did it for Easter Bunny Trail, because it was, you know, such a simple walk that a little two-year-old could walk the trail down and back. Such a simple walk that a little two-year-old could walk the trail down and back, no issues. Um, and I kind of read those as, that's how I kind of ranked them, so I don't know if you guys. Feel we need to move anything around. Some of them can kind of be combined.
So for clarity on um your choices, so the Highlands, you listed three things. Are those three individual things that would be CIP, or is that a grouping of one?
I'd have to confirm with Marsh. I think we can put it in as one, you know, because it's the same location. Essentially, I think it gets in, put in as, you know, like site improvements. Would be, um, like site improvements. That way they're not getting individual thing. And then in the description, we would name, you know, describe what we want to actually accomplish there. Um, the aerators is a big thing. Um, I mean, I know we've been getting a lot of complaints about the water and the leeches. So I don't know why we're, you know, getting new aerators if we try and clear the water up a little bit. Um, get some bacteria that we could do for all here. The, I think it's like every other week, we put in so many packets per surface acre. Um, and they'll eat this, you know, algae, and then they have another one for scum at the bottom. Um, just something we could do to try and, it's not even that expensive too, but if we're putting in money for the aerators. We could, you know, just give it a try for here and see how it works. See if something we want to maybe bring into the budget in the future.
If you were gonna do site improvements for Highland as a whole, would we look at the, the roof on that pavilion all in the same fell? So we could put it one, under one CIP?
We could, yeah, um.
I don't know what age of that one is.
Cause I mean, like that could be possibly a CIP by itself across multiple locations. Like if we put, you know, all the roofs, because actually I think we got prices, and I think if we, we were to do them all together. Uh, we would get a better, get a better price for doing all the roofs, because we, you know, it's more than one location. So it might be smart to hold off and do that, them all together, um, just for cost.
Okay, so this is just a, a list to kind of give us a heads up and think about, right?
Yeah, I mean, we do have to, they want us to put every, like things into the system, I think, by the end of the month.
By the end of this month.
Yeah, so then I just, I got the email last week, so they want it entered into the clear gov this month. Uh, like the projects we'd wanna do. And then, so I mean, if we can pick what, you know, kind of an idea or rank them, and then where the money runs out. I can get them inputted in the system. And then we can, I can bring the full, you know, what I've inputted to you guys for approval at the next meeting. Cause that's just the start of the process, is to be inputted, but then we can improve it, and I think. Then it would go to the mayor and all that is not till after. They just want it inputted into the system so Liz can start getting everything together. Start the budget process on her end.
Okay.
Are there any um estimates attached to any of these yet?
Not yet, um, I don't, I can't find it yet, but I know we did get prices for all the roofs. Um, and then I was gonna contact Sean, because I was trying to find out solar lights we just had put in at the Town Green, so we have pricing for that. And then also just verify if Public Works can do a lot of the work, keeps the cost down, essentially the materials. Um, and then there might be like one point where they need an actual, you know, outside electrician to come in and tie everything that they. They do in, but actually as a solar light, there wouldn't be any, you know, they wouldn't be tiring tying in an electrical system. It's all a closed system, so. And assuming they'd be able to handle that, we can buy the, the lights themselves. And then even the parking lot, they might be able to handle as well with the mellings. Um, but that's with that, the security concerns that we, I think last minute or the meeting before. Um, there's been complaints, and it is a dark park, so it makes sense to add some lighting there, that's. One of the typical returns.
Yeah, there's been enough headlines about that, but I think we have to do something.
Do something.
Scott, why am I remembering some stairs or railing at the community center? Is that, did we fix whatever needed to be fixed and that was done, right?
Yep, it, uh, Public Works did it, and we're now trying to convince them to, they. Entered the stairs exit right into the garden. Uh, so we're trying to see if maybe they'll put a cement slab or something down there instead of just walking down into the. And then onto the sidewalk, um, but it was put in, um, so that. Cause they weren't uh to building code before.
And I think the only other one I had on our previous capitalist was possible installation aside on core fields. But given where we are with the reports on that, I, I think that goes away, right?
And well, that money is still there and actually allocated for that project. We just, I don't see the need to do it at this time with the, you know, all the progress we made on that field. And there's no need to. We want to talk to Coler. This year we have, I think, the money to raise the heads. Um, which wouldn't be a bad idea, because they were already hitting, hitting the grass blades. Cause over time, it, you know, it slowly gets built up.
It just creeped up.
Yes, yeah. Um, so I mean, hopefully looking to do that maybe in the spring, and I think we have enough to replace the heads too. Cause I think when you extend them, a lot of times, when you turn the system back on, there's a number of heads that'll. Um, that won't work because they got dislodged with the extension. And the head cost was very minor just to replace all the heads while we're doing the work. Um, cause I think it's like, I forget, like twenty-four dollars a head or something like that. It was minor, rather than having to then turn the system off and then replace any heads that were broken after the work's done. Just do it in one shot.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um. For the sake of time. You know, I certainly think we should probably invest some money in Highlands. I mean, it's. It's kind of an eyesore as far as what use it can be with that lake being so uh problematic. So I think that should be on the list for sure.
Hmm.
Um, Christie Hill, I think the lighting, like you said, the headlines have been all over the place, and it'd be good to get some lighting in there. So that's two. You know, I think the Town Green, it's probably gonna be used more if the playground's a little nicer.
Hmm.
That is a central location to the town, so it'd be nice to kind of pretty that up a little bit.
See, my, the one.
Timing question for me though, right? Is that something this year, or do we hold that off until next year, once all the work on the Town Green is done? That's my only thought. I agree with you Ken, but I just think it's a sequence of things.
That, that's kind of my thought as well, because I think Phase Two, part of the plan is actually to put in a new playscape. So that playscape's, it's very old. It's not really, doesn't have a lot of, you know, enticing play elements for the kids. It's, you know, your very old monkey bar, metal pipe, uh, playscape. Um, so it wouldn't be, it'd probably be worth replacing the playscape itself in the future, and actually it's on the plan for the Town Green. So I was thinking maybe just, you know, quick fix with the safety surfacing till we do that. Um, and then we bring woodchips in for the playgrounds on a regular basis, so just bring in extra woodchips and. Replace that surfacing. That's a cheap surfacing versus when we do put in a new playground, I would probably say we do like a synthetic. Uh, material. Actually, I was looking at, they have a synthetic. It looks like turf, so it would match like the whole concept of a Town Green. But it meets all the, the safety requirements. It's a very soft surface that actually is meant to look like grass. But it meets the standards for playground servicing. And then they have the different, uh, different types for different fall heights. And then that also alleviates maintenance too, if we were to invest, you know, it's more money upfront, but then you're not adding woodchips, you know, every other year. I would definitely wait though till we put a new playground in to be bad at that location.
Anybody else have any uh desires?
I think, you know, you mentioned cleaning the trees at Erickson, which could possibly up its usage. Honestly, that just goes to our revenue, so I actually feel like that's maybe something to consider pretty. Near the top too. And it's a pretty commonly used park, so.
And what we could do is package that, like not just Erickson. Um, if there's other locations where we need trees removed, like if there's any dead trees at, say, Sawmill or any other locations, we could put then at that.
There is one, by the way.
Capital improvement, yeah, and just to remove, you know, a number of trees in one sweep. Uh, rather than just Erickson, but I mean, Erickson could be in, you know, one of the, the main goals for that.
Well, in the same vein, oh, sorry. Um, in the same vein, I was gonna say, um, like a gazebo at, um, Sawmill. What, what kind of permit fees would that bring in for like a wedding? And is there, do we get a lot of interest in that kind of stuff?
At Sawmill currently, that's pretty much the main rental usage. And I mean, they're renting just to use the park. There's no structure at all whatsoever there. Uh, it's literally just they get the permit to use the park for their wedding reception. They'll bring in sometimes chairs or, you know, a nice little arch. Um, I mean, it might be, you know, something down the line to think of as a good rental draw for that location to have another pavilion. People are always looking for pavilions, and that way it wouldn't be just rented for, say, weddings or, you know, pictures for prom. It would, you know, you'd actually have tables and pavilion there, so somebody could have, you know, a cookout or something there, a family gathering. Which they really wouldn't have there currently.
Is, so would maybe a smaller project be putting in an arch? Or, you know, something like that, something that's not like huge, but gives a little bit more. I don't know, aesthetic.
Yeah, well, the thing is for capital, it has to be at least five thousand dollars, so it has to be a larger, a larger project. Um, and then that, I think it's kind of, it's more, you know, beneficial for them to bring in their temporary arch. So they can put it wherever they want on the property, um, and decorate.
I would say shelter there. I mean, we watch them all the time. I sit on the deck and go, oh gosh, they made it something, you know, I would take a shelter of some sort. Without opening up the sawmill, given the smaller size of the wedding parties that we see on the ground.
Hmm. Yeah, and there's, I think, a lot of land there too, because we could even clear, you know, space if need be to open the park up. Uh, me and Russell, I think, looked at the map, and there's a lot of property that we have there that's not being utilized. It's just being overgrown for us, so.
And then I guess, Scott, my only other thing was Russ is definitely making his way around town daily. I know that he said the truck's not imminent, but we probably need to move that up on the list somewhere.
Yeah. No, definitely this year or next year, I'm thinking we should, you know, cause I mean, we would sell, I'm guessing the old truck, cover some of the costs. But, you know, that's typically what the town would do. Um, I mean, it gets used every day, um, except for Wednesdays, because he's off. But actually, it sometimes gets used Wednesdays, because when I need to use it sometimes, I'd take it.
Okay, so that's uh, that's five right there. We got. Highlands. Christie Hill. Um. Truck.
General tree clearing, right?
Say again?
General tree clearing starting at Erickson.
Yes, tree clearing Erickson. And then, um. Sawmill Pavilion.
All right, we want to do Sawmill. Um, do we want to see how the canopies are looking first for our existing pavilion?
You talking about Erickson or Sawmill?
Uh, Erickson, Erickson. So the, it's a temporary pavilion there, because of the deep grant, we can't put a permit. Um, Russell, I, I'll have to maybe go down and take a look at him with him, but. He's added that we should be getting those in the near future, because I mean, we wouldn't get this till at, the money till of July. So technically, if the canopy we buy wouldn't be, we wouldn't utilize it till the following season. Um, so my worry is if, you know, something happens to the current one. Over the next season, then, you know, we might not have, be able to put up the pavilion till July of the following year, when we are able to buy a new canopy for it. Uh, the frame, it's fine, it's just the canopy. Um.
I just need to want to go, Scott, but I wouldn't, yeah.
Yeah, and I can look at the cost and see if maybe we, you know, if it's not over five thousand, maybe we throw in. This, you know, stone dust to refresh the track there, if we're just shy.
Well, maybe take down some trees too, right?
Yeah, well, I was gonna do that as a separate.
Okay.
That way we could do it across multiple locations.
Okay.
We have a little more freedom. Um, if we input it that way as a separate project, not as a station specific.
So that was five, right?
Um, yep, I believe so. And I think. That should be, I mean, I'm guessing that will put us about where, how much we have, especially like a truck. Pretty expensive. Um, I guess, do we want to, if there is money left, maybe go to get woodchips? Yeah, we've got something could wait if need be, um, and that's something like we wouldn't have to view all the playgrounds at once. Um, depending on how much money's left, we could do that in, you know, sections. And we kind of topped them off a few years ago with a little, you know, little money we had extra, but not. That was more of a cosmetic, making it look fresh first, getting the depth we need.
Would woodchips count as a capital improvement?
Oh, we can, when we spend over five thousand dollars in woodchips, yeah. Um, plus to make it easier, rather than the, the cheap way we did it last time, we had the woodchips delivered to Public Works. And me, Russell, Paul, and we hired all the summer camp kids to help us. Load it out of the truck and spread it, uh, a week and a half. We, if we have the money, we could actually, the company comes in with the machine, and they just have a big blower. And they just literally blow the woodchips out onto the, the playscape, then drive to the next location and. It'll take them, they'll probably get them all done in a day, when it took us probably weeks of manual labor. Wheelbarrows and shovels.
All right, so we got our five there then, that's at least a start, and obviously this is a. Just proposals of what we're.
Yeah. So I'll get all the prices and then input what we can, and then we'll spit it out of the system for approval at the next meeting. You know, with the actual numbers and estimates.
Okay. Anyone else have any other comments? All right, so let's uh have a motion to adjourn. Anybody? What do you want to say on?
So moved. I was on mute, sorry, there was too much noise, and I see Barb raising her hands to uh second.
Sorry for the extra long time, but we, we talked about, I didn't think it was gonna be this long, but it actually turned out to be pretty long.
Yeah, I was trying to move it through, but uh always the budget stuff takes, takes some time.
Yeah. All right, guys, have a good night.
Yeah, thank you guys for taking your time.
Bye bye.
Good night.